And then, our school.
Um, probably the meeting first. So, in board docs, we had it back. We have it.
Yeah.
Which.
I'm sorry.
Hi.
You're all right?
Hi.
There's a position. Oh, you're there. Hold it over here. Okay.
Congratulations.
The United States. In our political stance, one nation under God, individualism, liberty of justice. Do we have any other comment?
No, sir.
Okay. So, next item is approved minutes September sixteenth, twenty twenty one.
I'm sure that we approved the committee meeting minutes of September sixteen, twenty twenty one.
Second. Hold on. Say yes, I mean aye.
Aye.
Okay. And especially the question. Correct. Please, anyone?
Yes, sir.
Hi, can you all hear me? I'm having a little bit trouble hearing the.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, there we go. It was a little breaking up a little bit in the room there, but I can hear you. Uh, thanks for having me. Um, I didn't know if you all would like to, you know, if you had, if you had some things specific that you'd like to discuss. Um, I just had a few, um, a few talking points about the amount of development we're, we're experiencing in the town to bring up. Um, but otherwise I'm here for discussion.
Yes, that's fine. You can go ahead.
Sure. Okay. Um, so just to bring you all up to speed on, on kind of the level of res- residential development and growth that we're experiencing in the town, I'm just going to run through some of the recent numbers that we have seen. Um, so to start off, um, as I'm sure you all know, the port of Port Royal was recently sold to Safe Harbor Marinas. Um, part of that sale includes, um, a development document that allows for five hundred and seventy-five dwelling units throughout the, throughout the entire site. Um, ninety of those units have already been approved by the town, um, in the form of a subdivision. Um, and then moving into other multifamily and single family development that it's occurring in the town. Right now, we are conditionally approved, um, for a neighborhood called the Oaks at Battery Creek for a hundred and ninety-seven dwelling units. Um, the reserve at Battery Creek, which is on, um, just south of Wright's Point, is approved or conditionally approved for two hundred and fourteen dwelling units. And since, uh, the end of June twenty twenty one, we have approved just shy of one hundred single family homes on individual lots in the town. Um, so I did not add those numbers together, uh, but we are think about, you know, just over a thousand, um, units that are, that are conditionally approved or approved, um, at this time. Uh, past that, we are looking at eight separate residential developments, whether they're single family or multifamily. Um, they are in various stages of the review pipeline. So some of them are just conversations on the layout of a site and how many units would be able to be fit. Um, others are a few steps past that. Um, so, uh, you know, new development is constantly on the way right now and it has not slowed down. I've been with the county, or with the town. I used to be with the county, now I'm with the town and the town, uh, has experienced no break from, from the kind of the onslaught of residential development since I began in June. Um, on top of all of that new development, we also still have one more phase, um, in the Shadow Moss subdivision, which is, which is currently being built out. And Shellpoint Farms on Savannah Highway has recently started a new phase and is permitting new homes at a pretty rapid rate. Um, the only other thing I really wanted to touch on, um, before we, we have a discussion is, is just the population growth in our town. Um, you know, the last ten years, we've seen a twenty-four percent, uh, uh, growth in our population. So we're, as of twenty twenty one, the census data was at thirteen thousand, two hundred and, uh, some change. And so if, if we're looking at that same rate of growth, we would see about sixteen point five thousand, uh, people living in the town by twenty thirty. Um, that coupled with, you know, the, 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 the locations of the new development that we're seeing, some of which are right near the heart of the Port Royal Village, um, for kids who, you know, kids who would be zoned for Port Royal Elementary School. Um, and then also of course, out on the western part of town, um, the, the amount of, the amount of development happening out there is going to kind of just pop up out of nowhere in the next two or three years. So something that you all should be aware of. Um, so that's kind of what I had for you numbers wise. If y'all have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer.
Um, hi Noah, this is Tricia.
Tricia.
Um, you know what? I was just logging in as you started. So, um, where I started writing down numbers, you said a hundred and ninety-seven units. It was at apartments?
That is a mix of single family and town home.
Okay. And what about the two fourteen? Is that at the preserves?
That's the reserve at Battery Creek. That's going to be the part that's undeveloped right next to Wright, Wright's Point.
Okay. Um, and is there, are those apartments also?
Those will be apartments, correct.
Okay.
Um.
You said a hundred single family home, um.
Permitted in about the last six months. So those are individual lots on top of, uh, multifamily or, uh, new subdivisions.
Okay. And no, I apologize that the very first thing you said was how many, how many homes are going to be in the, um, new redesign of the port?
So total dwelling units, um, and that does not, that's not, there's no specification on the type of housing for those five hundred, uh, for those dwellings is five hundred and seventy-five. Um, the Port Bluff neighborhood that was subdivided, um, was ninety lots. Um, that kind of halted in the review process once, you know, new, the, the new sale was starting to go through. Um, so that could be reworked, but at, at this moment, ninety single family lots are slated for the, the bluff.
Okay. So that's where you're coming up with a thousand, that five seventy-five plus two.
So, and you know, there, there's something to be said for the type of development that might occur with those five hundred and seventy-five units. So just anecdotally, there's a better chance of those five seventy-five to not necessarily be heavily, you know, families with children. So just something to consider as well.
Yeah.
Um, Earl Campbell, you, you mentioned ninety lots. Those have been approved already, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you see any, um, further move of Port Royal going out in some other areas?
As far as annexing?
Yes.
Um, it's not, it's not a priority anymore. Um, in fact, I think the priority, you know, the, that, that was the annexations that have occurred the last twenty years, um, were, were encouraged by the town. Um, and that we still, you know, we still help people through that annexation process if they'd like to request to annex. But we don't really do any, uh, marketing for that anymore.
Okay.
Um, Noah, do you have, um, like a price point for any of these? Or any information on who the target, um, the market might be for these? Cause you know, again, like you said, those ninety lots may not, or the five hundred and seventy-five may not necessarily be all, you know, elementary school age or middle school. But do you have any information in regards to the target market?
For the, for the remainder of the port you're talking about?
And just anything. I mean, what, if you could just share some information you might have about even any of that hundred single family homes, um.
It's tough to say, you know, like the reserve at Battery Creek, which is the one by Wright's Point, um, that, you know, it's apartment buildings. They, they're slated as, you know, twelve or eighteen unit buildings. But, uh, to speak candidly, most multifamily developers right now love saying the word luxury apartments, no matter what they're like. Um, so it's, it's difficult. You know, I don't really go through their market analysis with them, so it's difficult to, to, to say who they would realistically be marketing it to. Generally, if you're seeing the word luxury apartments, um, you can, you can bet that folks with families are, are more than likely going to be able to afford that and they'll be close to market rate, if not market rate.
Yeah.
So the, the hundred and ninety-seven units, those are single family?
They are a mix of single family and town home.
Okay, all right. And then the two hundreds?
Two fourteen?
Two thirteen.
Yes, yes, yeah, two fourteen.
Those are the apartments.
Yeah.
I will say, and I don't want to keep, I, I won't throw more numbers at you, but just, um, some of the developments that aren't far enough through the review process to give you unit numbers or a real name or anything. Um, one of them is the, is the open space that's left adjacent to the preserve apartments.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, the road, right there on Rebo?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, there is another smaller multifamily development that is in the early stages of review. Also along Rebo Road at the corner of Rebo and Richmond Avenue.
Okay.
Um, and then two major, larger multifamilies are both on Grover Hill. Um, they're in various stages of the review process, but they're both on Grover Hill on the old golf course property.
Okay.
And so those don't have any official approvals yet. They're still in the stage of approve, uh, you know, getting site layouts and unit numbers and traffic analysis, um, taken care of with me before they go into full approvals by the, by our engineer and building officials and so forth.
Noah, do you have any, I timeframes for any of these? Like, are we talking? And perhaps you said it earlier and I apologize, I was, I was writing, um, but you know, are you saying that in the next five years, these one thousand units might be up and running? Or do you have any, any projections?
I could, I, I mean, re, you know, some of them's, including the reserve, which is the two hundred and fourteen are nearing completion. The, so the, the, the one ninety-seven and the two fourteen could be fully approved in the next month, as long as they get the, the remaining outlying items to me from, um, outside agencies that we're waiting on. Um, so that's three hundred, or I'm sorry, uh, four, four hundred, just over four hundred. Um, you know, the remainder of that number that I threw out, it's really up in the air as far as what happens with the, on the developer's end. So that's why I just wanted that caveat in there that, you know, the other eight developments in the pipeline, they, I have no guarantees that they will follow through and be completed. Um, but the port development with, which is the five seventy-five and those other two that are right around two hundred, I would say within, within two years for the, for the two, two hundred, uh, apartment slash single family complexes. And then the five hundred and seventy-five units on the port, it could be eight to ten years till you see a lot of dwelling units out, um, on that property.
Okay. And, and the Shadow Moss and the, uh, you said something else farms. I didn't catch the beginning. Shellpoint Farms, those are, uh, in construction phase or in approval phase?
So, so Shadow Moss is in its final phase of construction. Um, so once they're done, they're done and you won't see the banners anymore for them to keep advertising the next phase. Um, and then Shellpoint Farms, uh, you know, they have just started their next large phase, which is, I think, the third phase. Um, and to be honest, off the top of my head, I'm not sure if three is the final or if there's another one. Um, as it was, it was approved before I was here and I haven't, haven't gone back and looked at what the, the next steps would be after this phase.
David, go ahead, David. Go ahead, David.
Thank you, Earl. Um, do, do we have a way that, uh, or a formula where we can transmit this information into what we anticipate the impact will be on our schools? I guess this is, question is for Robert.
Earl.
All right, go ahead, David.
Hey, I got it. Um, his question was, do we have a direct relationship between their numbers and what shows up at our schools? Do you want to dig back here?
So that's, it's a complicated process. And, and I think Ms. Fidget's question asking about sort of where the marketing, what, what the price point is, goes into that. We know, you know, by comparing one neighborhood to another eight neighborhood of equal value sort of in the price point, we can see what it has generated in the past or currently has and sort of equate it to that to come up with a, you know, a percentage point. You know, if they build five hundred homes, we'll know we'll get, you know, ten percent students in there. So you can calculate something like that and that's, that's sort of what our projection model does because it looks at how many kids live in each neighborhood. So it calculates that cohort survival that we talked about. Until they show up, until they build the house, it's, it's anybody's guess.
Yeah, I was just, you know, we're, we're getting information and I was just. Yeah, I was just, you know, we're, we're getting information and I was just wondering if we could translate that somehow into, uh, into a potential impact because it, it seems that Port Royal is having explosive growth. It seems that way to me as I drive through. So if our model, uh, you know, takes care of that, then great. Uh, then this is just informational to give us like anecdotal stuff. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Boatright, do you have any questions?
No, sir, but I enjoyed the, uh, discussion.
Well, thank you, sir, for your presentation.
I, you know, I guess the only other thing I'd like to say before we're done. You know, if, if you get to the point where you'd like to add in addition to Port Royal Elementary School, I'd be happy to be part of that design discussion. And that's all I'll say. Thank you all so much.
Yes, sir. Well, say from the county standpoint, and I'm speaking just for the unincorporated county in Northern Beaufort County. Um, we are, um, I guess much more modest, uh, projection of growth, but that's based on design. Um, one of the, in our comprehensive plan and our agreements with the city of Beaufort and the town of Port Royal, you know, our land use schools, direct growth into the municipalities, um, you know, and, and try to keep parts of our county more rural. And so, you know, most of the growth you're going to see is going to be in Beaufort and Port Royal, but we still have development in the county, especially in areas like Ladies Islands, you know, that which were largely developed in unincorporated Beaufort County, not in the municipality. Some, uh, you know, developments to be mindful of, uh, on Ladies Island, I would just say the largest would be Gleason Farms, and this is on the, uh, the old Green Heath tract, which is approximately 100 acres. You know, that, that situated behind Cusal Elementary. You know, that project, it's a Mongo Homes, uh, development of 187 single family dwellings. They seem to be priced in such a way, I, I think that the, the website advertises below 300. Seem to be in that area that, that could generate, you know, a lot of students. Um, you know, right, you know, within walking distance of, of, um, of Cusal Elementary. The other thing to keep in mind is that we did a plan for Ladies Island several years ago, and there is still a capacity within our existing subdivisions of approximately 600 subdivided but undeveloped lots. So just scattered around the island, if we didn't approve any more development, um, we still have undeveloped platted lots that could be built on, you know, and so that, you know, there, there's just still, it's, it's kind of hard to slow down the, the growth on Ladies Island just because of the volume of what's already been approved. You know, and most of that is in Northern Ladies Island. Let's see, other projects. There are two multifamily projects that are in the early stages. Um, they're both, um, low income housing tax credit projects. One is located in Laurel Bay and Bay Pines Road. Um, and they're projecting 218 multifamily units there. And the other one is, uh, on Possum Hill Road, just behind Battery Creek High School with 80 multifamily units. They still have to go through all their process of obtaining the low, low income housing tax credits, but their first step is going through the development permit stage and, and both of those are going through that right now with the county. The other large development in that part of the county is, you know, Haber Sham is, is starting to approach. You know, they're pretty much have sold off all their lots, but they still have future phases of, of that project. There's about 437 additional dwelling units that could be platted in, um, a future phase of Haber Sham and then across Cherokee Farms Road. Um, there's, uh, Cherokee Farms over there. So that's potential of, you know, 437 additional houses in that area. One project that you may have noticed, it's not large, but it's not in an area of the county that usually sees this level of development. But across, um, uh, Stewart Point Road from, uh, Whale Branch, uh, middle and elementary is a, a single family subdivision called Teal Bluff. Um, and that's 45 lots over there. So that's just of a scale that's not usually seen in that, you know, the Seabrook Stewart Point area. One thing to be mindful of, looking out on the horizon, is that there is a large undeveloped plan unit development called Burlington, which is located just north of Haber Sham, kind of between Haber Sham and Laurel Bay along Broad River. And it's sat there dormant for many years. It's approved for a thousand units, but we're starting to hear interest, uh, from, from different developers in, in looking at potential developing that site. That could really change, if it developed at that full capacity, really change, um, you know, the, the dynamics in, in that part of Burton. But outside of that, I mean, we're, you know, we anticipate moderate growth in other areas of the county, but on St. Helena Island, um, north of the Whale Branch River, you know, nothing, you know, that, we're not anticipating any difference in the, the general pace of growth that they've already experienced. But, um, with that, I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Um, I have a question, um, what about annexation as far as Yemecy? Have they still talking about that?
I mean, Yemecy has been annexing. We've been trying to work proactively with their staff to define a growth boundary. One of the things so, are the land that they've annexed have all been under protection and conservation easement. So it's not, wouldn't, none of it would result in any significant, you know, um, population growth in that area, but there's a potential for them to annex other properties. Right now, I would say that, that maybe the market is not quite out there, but um, that's why we definitely want to work with their town staff and try to make sure we're, the county and the, the town of Yemecy are on the same page as far as what we see as appropriate growth for that part of the county.
Thank you very much.
So, um, Mr. Merchant, what are you hearing the price point for that Teal Bluff?
I honestly don't know. I, um, I haven't heard anything. I haven't really looked it up. Um, you know, the, the lots are kind of, they're, they're large lots. Um, they, they back up to a marsh, so I'm not sure whether they're trying to target, you know, higher end just because of the, the access to the marsh. I could look into that.
Well, I, when, last time I drove past it, you know, I, I thought on the sign it said something around 3, 350. I just thought it'd be more than 45 lots. I didn't realize the lot sizes out there were, it was going to be a bigger lot size.
Yeah, I think they're, they average about half acre.
So how far, how far along is Gleason Farms?
Well, they have gotten conception approval, or I believe they have final approval for phase one, but they have not platted the lots yet. So I'm not aware of where they are in the development. What we've been seeing though is with these production, there, there's such a pent up demand for, for new housing and, and with these product, production home builders. Once they get started, as long as they have a demand, they, they move fairly quickly. I mean, if you look at the pace that Oyster Bluff developed or, or Osprey Point, or I mean, Mayland Bluff, uh, down on 170 by O, um, O K T Elementary. Those are developing really fast and I anticipate once Mongo Homes gets started at, um, you know, Gleason Farms is going to move at a similar pace.
And is he, uh, you know, the one I'm saying, is that called, uh, Oyster? What's the house on San?
You mean the D R Horton development?
I think so.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I believe they are. Yeah, they, they, that, that happened within a, you know, two or three year timeframe. It was fairly quick.
David, clear. Thank you, Earl. Uh, I want to follow up on Earl's question. There was talk about Yemecy wanting to be annexed into Beaufort County. And that was going to have an impact on us because there's a school there and there's a lot of students that we have to absorb. Is there any more talk about that?
I'm not aware of where that conversation is going. It primarily, it would have to be, from what I understand, in order to move those boundaries, it would mean both Beaufort County and Hampton County agreeing to, you know, the, doing a countywide referendum to move the, the, the county boundaries. It's not something done as easily as, as a municipality annexing. But, uh, their, um, his name just escapes me. Matt, Matthew Garns would be a good person to contact in the town to see where that effort is.
Alright, thank you. I mean, it sounds like it's down the road far enough that we don't really need to worry about it in a five year horizon, but, uh, I know there was a little, a little turmoil about it, so I just wondered if anybody knew anymore. Thanks.
Well, sir, thank you very much. The thing with Yemecy is that they're so. Oh, I'm sorry. David, the thing with Yemecy, they're, they're talking about raising funds. They, they, they had to raise pretty close to a million dollars before they can either do anything. So I don't know, I heard about that about several months ago. So that's, that's it.
A million dollars, a lot of money for Yemecy. I was just worried because that would flood us with you know, middle and high school students.
But can I ask, um, Ms. Crossfield and, and Robert, what, what does, what does all this say to you guys now? What, what I'm just hearing is, they, they just, just discussion wise, what is it saying to you? And not, nothing, nothing like, you know, in stone, but are these new numbers for you? Are these old numbers? Did you know this? Is this, um, you know, like David asked, part of the formula? I mean, obviously yes, but.
Some of these I did know about. I did not know the total number for the port, the development of Port Royal, so that, that's good to know. It's just something to watch all the time. So, you know, I maybe at least once a year, talk to the county. Noah just got to the, to the town, so, and I know Noah, he worked for the county. He actually wasn't, yeah. So, um, you know, it'll be something, an ongoing conversation about where, where things are. Um, it just, it does help to know that they're out there, so I can pay more attention and watch some of them. The Mongo Homes one, I actually happened to be at the school, um, it's not last summer?
Is that Cusal behind?
It's behind Cusal and the, the developer with, uh, Mongo Homes walked over. He was, um, wanting to develop a relationship with the school, so we kind of told him about our zoning thing that we could do, that we could potentially zone that neighborhood somewhere else, even though they were adjacent to the school. And they still wanted to develop that relationship. So we haven't done that. And it's, yeah, you know, something we have to watch, but they haven't built a house yet.
Yeah.
Last time I was out there either, so.
If, if I, I think David, when he mentioned it earlier, kind of hit on it, it's really anecdotal because it's something to watch out for. An example is at O K T. The Mayland Bluff and those developments around O K T. That is an indication to us, so, hey, O K T is, um, getting, you know, it's not twofold, but that's going to fill it up. It's kind of the same, yeah. It's the same thing, um, with Cusal is that, Cusal is, you know, you know. So that just tells us to be mindful, to watch that growth a little closer, but it really, you're guessing as compared to what we do is really count and what Carol does, excuse me, is count the, the kids that come in these seats and watch those trends in individual neighborhoods and add those together. So that's done really well for us, but it does give us an indication of areas we kind of need to watch a little closer and be knowledgeable of.
And, and the Mongo Homes, this one, and the one behind O K T, which name like River Oaks or something. Again, those both could have huge impacts on them, on that school.
And as you, as you know, in Port Royal, we have capacity to absorb a lot of.
We would love to have.
Yeah, I mean, so this is all good stuff. It's just that, that, you know, and the port is interesting, of course, because you know, for 10 years, we've heard it's 10 years away. So at what point does it actually move? We'll all just have to watch it and see.
The big question.
Yeah, I'd love to see that, that would be awesome.
With that, um, the problem behind Cusal, would you think we would probably have to move that school in that area?
No, because what you do look at is, um, how is the, you know, the whole Beaufort cluster as a whole doing? Because if there are ways in Beaufort to move those students as needed to make sure we don't get overcrowded. So there's plenty of capacity in Northern Beaufort County. It's just you may have to rearrange. So I would not be recommending a little school as a, even if that fills up Cusal.
Did you write down what the number was? I, he said that there's, um, still capacity when existing subdivisions, they're under platted lots. Did he say they're like still 600? Is that the number? Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, 600 lots.
Okay, and that's over all Ladies Island?
Yes, yeah, yeah. Mostly in northern, he said, right?
And you know, that's kind of been anticipated for some time to be developed too. It's been going very slowly.
Well, honestly, and that's why we purchased the land down there, because back in 2006, seven, eight, whenever we bought it, you know, Ladies Island was exploding at that time. We really anticipated that to continue.
Yeah.
But when that downturn back in that timeframe happened, it just, it didn't bounce back with students.
Yeah.
So, and again, those 600 should be for any.
And we have no idea how many of those 600 would be built next time. Could be one, could be 600, could be somewhere between.
You know, on this market driven way it is, you just want, you have to watch it. It's really, I mean, be aware of them and be mindful and watch them.
Well, I didn't, I didn't know they had 45 lots out there. I did, I know 300s.
Lower 300s, okay. That would be great. We have space.
Okay, David?
Uh, thank you, Earl. Um, following our conversation on Ladies Island. If, if we have plenty of capacity and the ability to move things around, do we need that land?
I, I would say, no, we do not. That is something we could look at putting up for sale.
Okay. That's, that's a question we should anticipate and, uh, sounds like you already have. Thanks.
Right. David, I know that, um, that Springfield Road, uh, something I brought up a couple, actually a couple of years ago. So it'd be very interesting when our land consultant brings us back, um, some recommendations. Because it, it doesn't look like it's.
I mean, what I'd say is one thing is what we heard today, I don't think it changes any of the major trends we're seeing. It may soften some of, nothing dramatic is going to change.
No, you know, just, Mr. Campbell, I, um, as far as utilize. utilizing the capacity of our current schools, I think that some of this is, um, encouraging.
Yes, it is.
It's encouraging as opposed to, um, you know, not hearing that there is this much in, you know, in, in the plans or, you know, whether it's five or 10 years out, which really is not a long time. No, it's not a long time. Um, and so I, I think that's encouraging because we know we have capacity north of the Broad. And, um, so, that's.
Um, you did say you have a, a list of, of, uh, students where they'll be going to school, very old school land in, in each area?
Mm-hmm.
To send that.
Well, I'll have the list. I'm not going to list the students, but I give you a count.
The count, yeah.
Yes.
Send it.
I'll send that to Rob and she can send it all out to you.
Next is update on school visit.
Mr. Campbell, can I just ask one more question? So, um, speaking about students and where they're going to attend school, um, is there, has anybody heard any new information on any new private or charter schools that are opening up north of the Broad?
I haven't heard any.
So.
Somebody said it's something, somebody's trying to get charter schools in Helena.
I haven't heard they've made any progress.
It's just, you know, this rumblings of where yours is.
Okay, okay.
David, do you know anything about that?
I'm sorry, Earl, what was the question I was?
About a charter school in Helena.
Uh, now they did talk, but I haven't seen any action.
Okay.
There is this one?
Where you? Mr. Smith? Mr. Smith, are you there?
Uh, yes, yes, what asked me, yes, sir.
Do you have any comment?
Uh, and, 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 and I'm sure, I just got in the meeting, sir.
Um, the question was asking, do you know anything about a charter school on St. Helena? Have you heard anything about that?
Uh, I, I've, I've heard little bits and pieces, bits, uh, bits and pieces of it.
Okay. Do you know who the people are? The folks are?
Uh, I, no, I, I've known of, of, of one, of one, of one, I've heard, heard of one person, but not, 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 not anything else beyond that.
Okay, all right.
Is, is that, was that what, what, what we were discussing today?
But that was, you heard, and we were just asking the question about if you know anything about it.
Um, I think that another one of our board members, uh, might, well, well, I don't want to speak too, I don't know. Um, I, 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 I'm, I'm checking into it. I will check into it.
All right.
All right.
And the reason I ask, Mr. Campbell, is just, just because, you know, trying to know where some of our students might be going.
Yeah.
And, um, what a capacity of a, of a school like that would be and where it would be drawing from and just kind of, you know, looking at all the different ins and outs.
Yes. If a state charter school, they don't have to come to us, but they, they need to talk to us if they don't want to do it because we have, you know, they should talk to us.
Yeah, but, but even if not, we know those are children that live in Beaufort County. And, you know, and so that's just part of the calculus of where do children go? David says.
David?
Yeah, Earl, um, the talk that I've heard about the charter school on St. Helena is that it is going to be targeting specialized students.
Oh, okay.
Um, that, that was its focus. I don't know how far along that is. I'm trying to think of the lady's name. I think it was, uh, uh, I'll look it up and I'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, uh, that's the one. I, I have two, David. Her name is Alana Dinkins. Yeah, because I was asked, huh?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was asked about, about her, asked about, um, wherever we were contacting, wherever we were contacting as a district about, about it.
Oh, okay.
I do, I do, I do know about that. But the whole organization instruction, no, I'm not aware. I don't know that.
Okay.
But David, you said it's supposed to be a, uh, it's supposed to be a, um, for a spread, a spread school, Mr. Scribger?
Uh, that's the information I got. That's the target audience. Oh, wow. But I don't know how far along it is. You know, you hear a lot of things. It's a long way from talk to actually getting it started and it would have to be a state school, so. Um, I don't know where it is.
Okay, thanks very much. We're down to, um, they have, um, visited each school in the northern area. I guess you will.
Oh, sure. All right. Um, so Mr. Campbell and I and Carol and many other people, many other, uh, different assortment for the different schools, um, did some site visits. So the document that you're looking at right now are just some notes that, um, I took down based on my own observations, based on, uh, discussions with school personnel. Um, Mr. Campbell and I talked a bit about what we saw mutually and so, um, I, I don't know if you, you know, I don't know how you want to do this, Mr. Campbell, go through each one or just if anybody has any.
I would suggest that board members, these board members, they did a copy of this. So if you have any questions, we can, um, discuss it at our next board meeting, which is next Tuesday afternoon.
During the committee report?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. So, but just to reiterate, these are, um, these are my own thoughts. These again were, um, things that were shared with us by the principals, um, of the observations, right, Mr. Campbell, things that we saw that needed attention. Is that?
Should, in the future, should we go visit those schools again? To look at some of the, some of the issues? What do you, what would you suggest?
Um, you know what, I, Mr. Campbell, you know what I think would, um, be very helpful if we also went back and reviewed what some of the conversation was prior to the referendum? Because, um, I do remember that Ms. Boatwright had brought up, uh, that she had been reviewing some of the audio or written the minutes or something. And there was talk about, you know, community
Right.
uh, involvement in discussing the schools north of the Broad. Um, you know, at this time, I, I don't know, um, going back in. I, I, and actually I think our next step might be to take the information that, that, that was, um, just put together 45 day count in the book and taking a look at the, the student capacity and the program capacity of each school that is on our list. And kind of going through and comparing and just getting a, a bigger picture. Um,
Just so you have a follow-up next week?
I think that would be very helpful.
Okay, I'll be fine.
Yeah.
So it's a very good note, so that's it. Very helpful.
When do you want to meet again?
We do have a certain date scheduled. Didn't we, didn't we pick a, like a something Thursday of the month? Didn't we? I think so. Um, um, I think it's at the 30th.
Are these votes in board docs?
The information you're looking at is in board docs.
Yeah.
So, the fourth Wednesday.
Is the 23rd of February.
Okay, I'll be fine with that. What time?
We were meeting at 3 o'clock.
Okay, at 3? You heard me, Earl?
I think Mr. Guyer is. Yeah.
Yeah, yes, sir.
At 3 o'clock. Next meeting is the 23rd of February at 3 o'clock.
All right, yes, sir.
Anything else?
So the future topic is looking at the 45 day.
Well, and the, the, the information in the facilities plan.
Right. Ms. Boatwright, will you show, have any comments?
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. No, I, I don't. And I appreciate, um, uh, Ms. Fidrick's bringing up the, uh, the need for a, a community committee because what I was, what I did find in looking at the referendum is that before we go to referendum again, there, they, we have apparently verbally or otherwise committed to having a community-based, um, north abroad committee to look at sort of school capacity. So just wanted to clarify that. But otherwise, no, I, I, it's interesting to hear about. Um, I'm so in my own little south abroad bubble. It's nice to hear about what's going on over there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Right, right. Nothing else you can adjourn.
Okay, remember your adjournments.